I will now call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Park Commissioners. Today is Thursday, May 15th. The time is 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call, please, Mary Beth?
Commissioner Bendy?
Here.
Commissioner Bowe?
Here.
Commissioner Hulting?
Here.
Commissioner Laduke?
Here.
Commissioner Matso?
Here.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Here.
Commissioner Grau?
Here.
Would anyone like to add, amend, or delete an item to the current agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Is there any public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. We will move to recognition of an outgoing commissioner. I ask Commissioner Tunnel to come up to the podium with me. Oops, sorry. Oh dear. We took the wrong. Which way do you want to stand?
I'll stand wherever you want.
All right. John Tunnel was appointed to the Board in February of 2019 and elected to the position again in April 2021, serving for just over six years. During his tenure, he held several officer roles, including Secretary, Treasurer, Vice President twice, and President. He also served as the liaison to the Policy, Finance, and Intergovernmental Committee, as well as the Oakton Referendum Task Force. John's time on the Board was marked by significant progress on capital projects across the district. These included Ozley Grant Projects at Woodland, Hinckley, and South Parks, new playgrounds at Main, Hinckley, and South Parks, the acquisition and development of the Wildwood Nature Center at 531 Forest View, the addition of the Outdoor Nature Classroom at Main Park, and the community gardens at Hinckley Park, and the resurfacing of tennis and pickleball courts at Northeast Park, just to name a few. Perhaps most notably, the Oakton Park and Facilities Project progressed from early planning to a successful referendum and ongoing construction. During his time on the Board, John played a key role in advocating for staff to receive an additional personal day. He felt strongly that employees should have the opportunity to celebrate a holiday that holds personal meaning, whether that be Juneteenth, Veterans Day, or even Halloween. Thanks to his efforts, staff now have that flexibility to recognize a day that is important to them. His service on the Board also coincided with uniquely challenging moments, including assisting and navigating the district through COVID-19 pandemic. One of the staff's favorite memories from that time is from 2020, when it became difficult to hire a Santa. Without hesitation, without hesitation, John stepped up, donning the red suit and riding the Park District bus to make doorstep visits to Park Ridge families.
Poor kids.
His kindness brought joy to children during a difficult season and perfectly captured his selfless nature and commitment to the community. Another challenging time was supporting the organization during a wave of senior staff retirements, most notably that of the Executive Director. John played a pivotal role in the search and selection process for a new Executive Director. This often involved difficult and sometimes heated conversations, but John approached the situation with diplomacy, civility, and thoughtfulness. John, your quiet leadership, generosity, and thoughtful contributions have left a lasting impact. Like many commissioners before you, we know your support won't end here. We're already looking forward to recruiting you for your next great role, perhaps with the Friends of the Parks.
I think we have a gift for you.
I would give thank you.
Thank you. The last picture.
Your shirt's on order.
Well, it's my turn. So, good evening. I put together, it's only about 45 minutes or so. It's kind of surreal because I remember being here and one of my public speaking days were just getting started, and I will say that somebody was looking out, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. So, thank you. As my time as a Park Ridge Park District Commissioner ends tonight, I want to take a moment to reflect. Cindy, I told you you might have to fill in. So, I'm going to try to get through this. I promise to keep it heartfelt, a little humorous, and not too long, probably 30 minutes or so. The journey began for me under very unfortunate circumstances. As most of you know, I was appointed to this role to serve the final two years of Jim Janik's term following his passing on December 4th, 2018. Jim was deeply committed to his family, this community, and to the Park District, and I want to take a moment tonight in honor and remember him. It was a privilege to carry on the work that he cared so much about, and I've thought of him often throughout my time on this Board. I still like to visit the memorial tree at South Park where he quietly looks out over the field. May he rest in peace. Over the past six years, I've had the work, the opportunity to work with an incredible group of commissioners and staff. I had one goal when I started here, to serve the community and do my best to advocate for all community members, affiliates, and users of the park. I want to thank every staff member here. I've never worked with a more passionate and talented group of people, people who make big things happen with limited resources, space, land, and money. The creativity on this team is simply amazing. I will say the creativity of having me as a Santa, I feel bad for the children who heard me saying. But you guys are amazing. It made my job as a Commissioner easier. I always knew that if a proposal came forward, it wasn't just about adding another truck or another fee. It had been carefully thought out, benchmarked against other districts, and strategically planned out. Park Ridge has the best team around. I wish I could list all of your accomplishments, but we'd be here for days. So instead, let me simply say thank you. You're amazing. Thanks to the support of the Board, I've had the privilege to serve in different roles. As Cindy kind of recapped, it seems surreal. Last year as the Board President, let's just say it was eventful. I had much darker hair before that year started, and now there's a lot more white showing up. We've experienced major leadership transitions, including the departure of the Executive Director. I didn't realize how much was involved in the search process and what it would be, not just for me, but for the entire Board. It taught me a lot about things about the hiring process and even more about patience. This definitely added a few more gray hairs. One of my true highlights of my time on the Board was being to hold the shovel in the picture at the Oakton groundbreaking and wear a hard hat. I've not built anything like that before and definitely didn't have any participation in the building, but I definitely looked the part. The most, and I do still have that hat, so I might show up every once in a while with the hat for public comment. So, that moment symbolized how far we've come, and I can't wait to see the amazing facility open this summer right on schedule. Of course, none of this would have been possible without the support of my family, my wife, Mary Ann, and our kids, Alex and Caroline. They've been incredibly patient and encouraging through late meetings. We used to have much later meetings, I will say, and weekend events, the occasional long-winded update to Park District matters at the dinner table, and taking calls throughout last year. I'm so grateful for them standing by me every step of the way. To my fellow commissioners, it's been an honor to serve with you. We didn't always agree, and that's the beauty of working with others. I've learned more in the past six years about how a local government works than I ever expected or wanted to. Each of you bring valuable experience from different walks of life and work hard to represent your friends and neighbors. Thank you for your support and friendship. I'm walking away with lifetime connections. To our new Commissioner Lori, best of luck. Your inboxes and weekly updates are about to get very interesting. And to the residents of Park Ridge, thank you for the opportunity to serve. This has been truly one of the greatest honors of my life. I'll still be around, just with fewer meetings and more time enjoying the parks we've worked so hard to improve. My dad always told me, leave a campsite better than you found it. I believe this particular campsite is one of the best in the country. And now it's time for me to head home. Thank you. It was an honor to serve.
So we'll do one oath of office, but I'll have each of you say your names individually. So, I.
Joan Bendy.
Robert Bowe.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of the Park District Commissioner.
Of the Office of the Park District Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
At this time, we'll take a short break for refreshments. All right. I move to adjourn CNA DA for the purpose of holding the annual meeting and therefore to reconvene the regular Board meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Can I get a second? Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hulting?
Yes.
Commissioner Laduke?
Aye.
Commissioner Mallon?
Aye.
Commissioner Matso?
Yes.
Commissioner Grau?
I'm here.
Commissioner Bendy?
Here.
I call to order the annual meeting of the Park Board. I move to appoint Corporate Counsel to serve as temporary chairperson until a president has been elected.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Grau. I will now accept nominations for the Office of President.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Grau for President.
Are there any further nominations?
Hey, wait a minute. Weren't we supposed to actually vote on the temporary chairperson? We didn't vote on it.
As long as there-
Obviously, there's not a problem. I'm just kidding. We should probably follow the-
As long as there's no dissent, a voice vote would have been sufficient.
But we didn't do either.
Correct. We can, yeah. We can resume, yeah.
I move to appoint Corporate Counsel to serve as temporary chairperson until a president has been elected.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you. I will now accept nominations for the Office of President.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Grau for President.
Second.
There being no further nominations, then by acclamation, I declare Sidney Grau as the President.
Special delivery. I will now accept nominations for the Office of Vice President.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Brian Matso for Vice President. Second.
Are there further nominations? Hearing none, I will declare Commissioner Matso the Office of Vice President. I will now accept nominations for appointment of the Office of Treasurer. I nominate Commissioner Joan Bendy for the Office of Treasurer.
Second.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I declare Commissioner Bendy the Treasurer. I will now accept nominations for the appointment of the Office of Secretary.
I nominate Commissioner Bowe for the Office of Secretary.
Are there further nominations? Okay, I declare Commissioner Bowe the Secretary. Now we will move on to Manassar. I nominate Executive Director Shea, the Park, of the Park Ridge Park District Representative to Manassar Board of Directors. Are there further nominations? Hearing none, Commissioner, I mean Commissioner, Executive Director Shea will be the Manassar District Representative. I nominate Superintendent Armour of the Park Ridge Park District Alternative Representative on the Manassar Board of Directors. Are there further nominations? Hearing none, I declare Superintendent Armour the Park District Alternative Representative. I appoint the following Liaison to Recreation Commissioner Laduke. Oh, I'm sorry. I have that wrong. Following Liaison to Recreation, Commissioner Mallon. Building and Grounds, Laduke, Commissioner Laduke, and Intergovernmental Commissioner Hulting. I move to adjourn the annual meeting and to reconvene to the regular Board meeting.
Second.
In stamper. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hereby reconvene to the regular Board meeting. All right, we'll move on to approval of minutes. I move to approve the regular Board meeting minutes of Thursday, May 1st, 2025.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll move on to the approval of the updated 2025 calendar. I move to approve the updated 2025 calendar of regular Board meetings as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I actually had a thought, like, should we, because we know that, you know, like, October, November, December, those months are very likely to have, you know, extra budget meetings. Should we set those now, or should we wait until it's closer?
Currently, right now, what Steph's doing, we're looking at the schedule, the timeline of events to pinpoint what dates it would be. They have yet to be finalized, but when they are finalized, we like to do it sooner than later, but we'll bring it back to the Board for a final approval for those special meeting dates.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, report of Park officials. Two things. I went to Park Stay last month with Executive Director Shea and Margaret.
Margaret Holler.
Anyway, it was a great experience. We got to meet with Senator Murphy and advocate for her and thank her for her help with IDOT issues and advocate for other Park District pending bills. And so, it was a great experience. And also, just had a story happen today. I met Declan Cannon. Why can't I think of names today? The owner of Harp and Fiddle today, who said that he is going to do away with plastic and plastic straws at his restaurant. And I said, well, what brought that on? And he said, well, you guys asked me to do it at Oakton, and I was checking into all the alternatives, and I just decided to go all in. So, what we do here affects our community, and I'm really thankful for the vision that everyone is supporting. So, it was a good story. So, that's all I have to say. Does our attorney have anything to say?
The attorney has no report this evening, although I'd like to congratulate the new Board, and it's truly a pleasure to be here. That concludes the attorney report.
You like that report? Executive Director Report?
Thank you. First, I'd like to echo what Eugene just said about the new Board. Congratulations to Commissioner Mallon for being on the Board, and congratulations to John Tunnel for his six years of service. It was great, the accomplishments I've heard throughout the night, and also thanking the entire Board for everything they've done this past year, and for Commissioner Grau for her first year of presidency. So, thank you. Moving on, earlier this week, the planning and zoning had a meeting to go over signage requirements about at Oakton. I included this in our weekly memo from last week. There were some requirements because our Park District land falls under open spaceland. Falls under open spaceland gives us a certain requirement for signage, and it was different than the commercial district. So, we were not able to have a sign, a monument sign and a building sign. It was one or the other. So, we were looking into changing this. We worked with Dirk Price from Ansel Glink, who also worked with Adam Simon, and P&amp;Z passed it unanimously at their meeting, and it'll go to final approval at the City Council meeting for this upcoming Monday. Once that is, we could go ahead and buy the wall sign that we will have on the exterior building that says Oakton Sports Complex. In the interim, we did go ahead and move forward with the monument sign that's out there because we wanted to ensure that we had a sign at the building when it opened, but knowing the fact that P&amp;Z has approved it, and it looks like it'll probably pass to City Council, we'll go ahead and approve that purchase next week, and it'll still be up and ready when Oakton opens. So, that was approved earlier this week. A couple upcoming events this week. One of our affiliates, the Park Ridge Garden Club, has their plant sale this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 at Cumberland Park. Here at Prospect, the Historical Society has their World War II encampment that's taking place from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So, that is here at Prospect. Again, Memorial Day is coming up. It's around the corner. Hard to believe that summer's starting quickly, but the parade is set to begin at 10 o'clock. They have asked all representation to be there at 9:00. We are spot number 18, which is like in the queue in the area. It's right across the street from the baseball field at South Park. So, we'll be there, and then we'll be representing the Park District. I have also heard that the Ford F-150 Lightning will be there, too. So, we'll have electric vehicle to promote throughout the parade, which is really cool. And then, this past weekend was a grand opening for baseball. Thank you to Commissioner Bowe and Commissioner Matso for being in attendance representing the Park District. And then, as the season turns, the summer, a lot of things are going on. Just want to give a huge shout out to all the staff for all their hard work and preparation for the upcoming season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on to marketing and public relations with Director Holler. Margaret?
Thank you. My board report is on pages nine and 10, and you may notice that I changed the format of my board report. While attending the legislative conference last month, there was a session on presenting information, so I took into consideration some of the things they said, and I made some changes. I hope that you find that it's easier and quicker to read, but still gives you the information that I was basically providing me for in more of a narrative format. So, I'm happy to hear any feedback of anything on the report that you'd like to see more of, or any information that isn't there anymore that you appreciated having in the past. Otherwise, I'll take any questions.
It was a nice dream.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking that information to heart. We sat through the session together. It was very interesting.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to Human Resources with Director Riker.
All right, good evening. My report's on page 11 and 12. Supervisors in collaboration with Human Resources Payroll and Safety and Risk have worked tirelessly on hiring staff for the summer season. They've done a great job. We're just on that final stretch of finishing up paperwork. We even had a paperwork drop and help night tonight and one next week to help out the supervisors. So, lots of exciting stuff as we gear up for the summer season. We've also had staff to attend multiple various trainings, whether it be in safety or HR type of related items. And then, we also met with our new risk management consultant through Padrema, Kyle Saros, the other day, and we were really excited to begin to collaborate with him and continue to work towards our district's safety goals. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. All right, thank you.
Very long report this month. A lot of stuff going on. Thank you. All right, we'll kick it over to finance. All right, let's have Superintendent Larson tell us all about accounting and finance.
Thank you very much. My report begins on page 13, and I did not attend the session, and so I have no pictures, and I'm very sad, but that's going to change with Director Holler.
Yeah.
She's going to help me. A few things, oh, my voice sounds loud. A few things that I wanted to mention that have happened since I prepared this report. One is that we made our June 1st debt service payments this week. I like to pay those a little in advance, just in case something goes awry, and confirm with our receiving bank that they have received them, and they were received. So, there were five interest payments totaling $921, about $921,000.
That's pretty low.
That seems low. So, I wanted to let you know that. Also, I don't know if you saw in the paper, but it looks like property taxes-
Are late.
Are late. So, they're going, having some system issues with their new software, and they're saying, right now, they're three months behind, but they think they can make some of that up and go to one month behind. But obviously, when I update the cash flow, I'm going to go to the three months behind, and then we'll see how that affects our plans. So, I have recently set up a full-year cash flow, which has been already really handy for us. So, it's going to be easy for me to move that over and see if we need to make any other adjustments, especially as we, you know, finish off Oakton. So.
Wow. Bad timing.
Yeah, I know. And it's just been like, we've had, I think, a year and a half of on-time property taxes, which made us all breathe a sigh of relief. So, it's hard to have it be delayed again. But I will keep you posted as we learn more. And does anyone have any questions?
Good choice with the digital recycling that you're doing.
Oh, thank you.
That company I've just, in the past couple weeks, been introduced to, and they seem to be very responsible in how they handle their equipment and how they recycle it.
Yeah. Director O'Leary leads that charge, and we collect until we have enough to recycle. And then, they're, you know, they come here, they pick it up, they're very clear with us what's happening to the equipment, and it makes us feel good that we have, you know, we can trust that it's being recycled properly or reused.
So, thank you. I'll let her know. I move to approve for payment the expenditures in the total amount of $2,146,937.82.
Sorry.
Thank you. All right, questions? All right, can I have a vote?
Commissioner Hulting?
Yes.
Commissioner Laduke?
Aye.
Commissioner Mallon? Commissioner Matso?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Grau?
Aye.
I'll pass it over to Commissioner Laduke for Recreation.
Nope.
Whoever. I'm sorry. I didn't, I wasn't updated there. What was it? Who was it? Mallon. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Oh, I, thank you for that. Strange introduction. I'm sorry, Lori. I requested April to provide us with that report.
Sure. My report begins on page 36 for Recreation. There were a lot of exciting bunny egg events last month, from the park to at home and the pool. And if you didn't notice, a new feature this year was added to the Extravaganz Egg Hunt using wooden eggs. So, eliminating some plastic there. And then, the Earth Day was another wonderful day. Started out a little chilly, but warmed up in the afternoon, and there were many events throughout the day for all ages to enjoy. So, we did a wonderful job coordinating that. Preschool wrapped up for the year. Graduation was here at Prospect. The teachers and team did a wonderful job with the ceremonies, decorations. So, it's so cute. And that will definitely be featured in next month's report. And then, in the athletics area, I want to do, again, point out the gymnastics participation. It's just really significant compared to previous years. So, that continues to grow. And also, not as significant in numbers, but volleyball's definitely seen a jump previous year. So, that's great, too. And our COVID volleyball league is also growing. So, that's, you know, adult sports are, you know, continuing to see a few more participants here and there. Wildwood and BTB, the Beyond the Bell participation looks great. And looking at a comparison from last month's report, we had a movement, you know, one way or the other, mostly more participation, but 340 participants either moved off the waitlist, added a few, I think, like 25 plans changed. So, there's a lot that is going on with that program on a regular basis. So, in case you're ever trying to compare, it's like always moving all over the place. But a lot more participants off the waitlist since last time, and a lot more just added in general. The Activity Center hosted another expo with many vendors for the attendees to speak with, and a lot of other great events and trips for the active adults as well. And the Fitness Center had a great month, and the- And the Fitness Center had a great month, and the yoga and kirk event, which was already mentioned last month, but that had more than last year, and a location switch to accommodate more participants. So we're going to look to do that hopefully again in the fall to do another one because people have asked for it. In addition to the egg dip, the aquatics team is in full outdoor pool mode and trainings are already in session. Pool pass sales are going well. I mean, we'll see, but I don't, we don't anticipate a huge push next year with the way the weather is, or next week with the way the weather's looking. It's a high in the 60s, but hopefully things shift, you know. But I'm not worried about catching up as soon as it gets warm. People are excited for the pools, and even if it's, you know, still chilly, people will go in that first weekend to enjoy the opening weekend. The dance recital was also this past weekend, so we'll report on that next month. BTB is winding down and staff is jumping right into camp trainings for camps this week. And we have an earlier start of the summer with the camp starting. So that was quite the crunch. All of the pools and the camp trainings are overlapping quite a bit, which usually doesn't happen. So it's very busy next week for everyone. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Question on the Beyond the Bell, the significant waitlist. What causes that fluctuation?
It's a little bit of space, but also in, the Wednesdays are really an issue because they have an earlier dismissal. So if you see waitlists, the majority of them are the Wednesdays because we just can't get staff there early enough because there's a lot of high schoolers that come straight from school and they don't have early dismissals. So we don't take the Wednesdays off the wait, participants off the waitlist until we're very confident we have enough staff to, for our ratios.
Thank you.
And Roosevelt and Washington are two of our biggest sites.
Thank you for the eggs. I like that you're reusing them. They're okay, it's okay if they're plastic, but don't throw them away, right?
We didn't throw them away, but.
That's great. Yeah, no, it's great that you're reusing them.
And we have to keep buying more and more and more.
Yeah.
Can't use it at the pool, though, for obvious reasons.
I went to the dance recital, and it was, seemed very well-run, and it was a beautiful venue. If you've ever been to the Displanes Theater, it's worth going to. You think you'll use it next year? Are you going to go back to Main East or any thoughts on that yet, or?
We love the venue, the way it looked for the audience.
Yeah.
Behind the scenes was tough.
Okay, I believe you. So being outside, I noticed, yeah, yeah.
So we're going to look for a different venue.
Okay, yeah, yeah. But I'm glad I went there. Yeah, if you get a chance to go, it is pretty cool.
Main East, they don't think the date's going to be available for us, which was the case kind of last minute, meaning, you know, we were trying to book for quite some time, and then they finally told us, you know, the date wasn't available. And it seems like that's going to be the pattern moving forward, unfortunately, because that's the closest venue, so we're.
And the one up in Northfield that you didn't, that was going over there.
Well, we did like that. It's just, you know, the parents thought it was quite a hike.
It is.
Trying to find closer.
Sure, I get that.
Wouldn't be so far.
And how did they like the 10 o'clock in the morning? Was that okay? Or, that was okay? Oh, okay, good.
We're sending out a survey, though, to get.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, okay.
Location and the time, how far people are traveling.
Yeah, it looked like you sold out or close to it.
Yeah.
So it was a little tight, I thought. Yeah, yeah.
So some of the smaller venues, unless, you know, five, six, 700.
Yeah.
And we like, we don't like to split it up either because the younger kids, you know, then they have the opportunity. It's like something to look forward to, to be advancing.
Well, yeah, well, again, tell Matt and Julie, they, nice job. Yeah, very nice, yeah. Thank you. No further questions.
Jennifer, you want to kick off for buildings and grounds?
Yes, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Wolf.
Thank you. My report begins on page 45, but before I give any updates on the items in there, I do want to say just a few words about the dandelions in town. I've been hearing quite a bit about it. I'm sure you guys have seen and noticed, or you've heard from your neighbors or friends. So we definitely missed a few key weed control windows over the past few seasons, and I identified a miscommunication with the staff that I take responsibility for not clarifying with them. So we've, we're all on the same page now. We have a better understanding of what our expectations are going forward, and it's just been a horrible couple of weeks looking at weeds in our parks and how quickly they pop up. So I forgot to take a look, but this front area was mowed today at 1:15. You can probably see dandelion heads come back up, and that's just the nature of them. If you're not familiar, you can cut them down and they'll put a new flower head up in just literally minutes. So it's a challenge. It gives the impression that we're not mowing or taking care of the properties, but I can assure you that we are, we are now treating them, they're getting mowed, they have gone to seed, so we'll have to deal with them again. We'll be more proactive in our timing next season. So in the fall, that'll make sure that we're a little bit better positioned for probably next spring, and we'll still have some. So we'll see this for a couple of springs. It's not going to be weed-free, and we don't really necessarily need to be weed-free, but the idea is that we have them managed so that they don't become a problem. They're not a nuisance, you know, to the neighbors, which we hear about, who are also trying to manage their properties and make sure that these aren't taking over the landscape. So we have some good products that we're working with, Tenacity. It has a much different, you know, method in which it works. It's not as harmful as some other chemicals. So we're working with that as we need to, to get this under control right now. So I would be happy to answer any questions about that in particular, if anyone has any right now, and then I'll move on to my report.
You had mentioned something passing, that this happens every May, and that it usually goes away, right?
Yeah, these, in another week or two, you won't even be able to tell that they're there unless you're looking closely at it. But driving by, the flower heads will be gone now, so, yep.
Mentioned everyone else.
Yeah, yeah.
I have to look at it for a little.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Yeah, so everybody has different perspectives, but I do know that.
Everyone hates dandelions.
No.
It does only last a few weeks.
They do.
Get over it.
And I do know that, like, in some areas, they're not really as much of an issue. However, if they're on an infield where a baseball game's being played, that can create challenges. So, yeah, it does. So anyway, moving on to my report, I just want to go through a few items here with some updates. We did make one full-time offer today for one of the many facilities maintenance positions we have open. So we're hopeful that that'll continue in the right direction. We're still working on interviews. The Centennial Aquatic Center, we've been dealing with some pump issues and such. We actually have been working our way through that. We now have all the pools running right now. We still have some odd electrical issues happening, so we've identified that it's with the variable frequency drive. So we're kind of looking into what that challenge is there. Can we bypass it? Can we replace it? Or whatever. But currently, everything's working and filtering there. So Hinkley Pool is now filled and is being heated and treated right now, today, as of today. So that's moving along and on schedule. South Park, they did make repairs on some of the lines today. For the pool, they were unable to repair the one just because they were, had glue that dried too quick and they couldn't get the fitting on. So they're going to revisit that tomorrow. So, but the contractors that was working on the South Park Ozlad project had made, done the damage, so they're responsible for making these repairs. My staff is keeping an eye on them and monitoring what they're doing, so we make sure that we're comfortable with the repairs that they're making. I think the last issue that I just had wanted to update the board on was the South Park Ozlad project itself. We, as some of you had noted, we are nearing completion with the tennis coat court coloring out there. So we do anticipate those courts should probably be open within the next week. We'll certainly work with Margaret to make that announcement made to everybody. We're also dealing with some weird water pressure issue that we're finding in relation to the shelter and restrooms out there. We're losing pressure at our RPZ, which is a reduced pressure zone valve, which is doing what it's intended, but more so than we want it to. And so the pressure is such that we can't get enough water to operate the toilets because the slown valves need a certain water pressure. So we've been working with the city closely on that, and we've brought someone else in to try to help us understand how to resolve that issue so we can get that wrapped up. Once we get that wrapped up, we can complete our inspections and get occupancy and open that portion of it up. So we're nearing the finish line, but just like any good project, we have just a few little extra things along the way and a few more trips to the hardware store, as you might say. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of those things or anything else in my report or in my area.
I think like 10 things circled, but I'll only do two. So Hinkley will not have a diving board?
Hinkley will not have a diving board.
Nor any other type of fun play thing?
Not for this season. You bring your own funness this year to Hinkley Pool.
Are we doing some kind of fun press release about that? I don't know. People are going to be.
Yeah, so this is something that initially came up, you know, last year at the end of the season. Staff worked through this tirelessly. We actually had another board donated from another park district that we're familiar with. When we went to put it in, they did an inspection and found that it had similar cracks, so we had to abandon that ship, but that was like the last thing. We're working with an aquatics engineer. We've had some internal meetings about some potential options, so we'll be probably bringing this up and working through that a little bit closer. But the timeframe for permitting with IDPH is very lengthy, and so it's just not possible to get it in time. Yeah, we'll have, we anticipate having something for next season, so just not sure what yet.
Well, we should probably get a, yeah. We're going to be sad, especially after they bought that pool pass, right?
Yeah.
Good. Oh, that's good.
We talked about it publicly at our meetings before, but anybody for like rentals to us that on the diving wall, the diving board might not be here, so it's been communicated since the information has been out.
But, well, I knew we had talked about it, but I didn't know there was a final answer on that.
Yep.
The next one, the flooring types that you're trying your maintenance equipment? Don't we have mainly one flooring type out at Oakton?
Sorry, it's for flooring, it's for flooring cleaning machines. So we do have primarily one type of flooring at Oakton, and so we're looking for like a floor scrubber for all the rubber flooring there. But what they're testing is they're testing cleaning machines, not the flooring type. We're using the Activity Center because it's got multiple flooring types because.
It doesn't have what we're going to have at Oakton.
It actually does.
It does.
Yeah, back in the Brickton room, it does. And the rooms that have the other hard floors are similar enough that we would practice on some of those anyway, and just get a feel for the type of machine and how it'll maneuver. The other thing is, is we have other needs, and as we're kind of changing over and doing, you know, renovations and replacing flooring in other areas, we're anticipating and we're starting to in certain areas, removing carpeting and bringing in more of the luxury vinyl tile that's been working out well for us in places like South Park, in the Nature Center buildings and things like that. So we're kind of testing it on that. Ron, our new facility maintenance manager, this is a really strong area for him because his background is like maintenance and schools and buildings and things, so, yeah. So he's actually leading all this charge right now, which is good.
And I'll just say yay for the baby oaks at the Oak, in the Oak Grove.
Yep.
Anyone else? I actually had a question. So under vandalism, was there any camera footage of the pole thieves?
I have not heard that they've seen anything on that. The issue there is that we have a large and unknown timeframe to look at because they've been sitting there on that trailer for so long, and so.
You just have no idea when the actual theft occurred?
We kind of anticipate that it probably happened slowly in like a trickle, where a couple of poles left, and then a couple more, and then a couple more. We have already received their replacement poles, and I believe we have most of all of them in place, so it's disappointing. It's a bummer, you know, but we managed through it and, you know, got the stuff back out there, so, yeah.
Did they have to get inside the building?
No, they were sitting on a trailer outside in the parking lot. So, I mean, in retrospect, that was probably not the best way in place to store that. We're really limited this year because of Oakton and so much stuff that we used to store back there. It's just not available, and the yard at Hinkley is so small. So, I mean, when it came up and it happened and they, everyone kind of looked around like, okay, yeah, that.
But who would think somebody would want?
Yeah.
Scrappers, I guess.
Exactly, yeah. Well, we'll be thinking about it in the future for sure, so. And we have identified and have some understanding of where we'll be able to store stuff like that in the future. We'll have some spaces around the Oakton garage that's being used as the construction trailer now, so we'll have some opportunities there and some other places that we're looking at, at the Hinkley Garage going forward, so.
I think that concludes Buildings and Ground, so I will pass it on to our Vice President for Policy.
Thank you very much. We have a resolution tonight. I'm going to read the motion first and we can talk about it. Move to approve Resolution Number 25-3, Resolution Appointing an Assistant Treasurer. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. This comes as an outcome of our Board Policy Manual update. When we were looking at it, our policy, we looked at Section 2.17, Officers of the Board and Duties. Within the park code, it allows us to have an Assistant Secretary and Assistant Treasurer. Similar to what we did last fall with Mary Beth, we gave her the position of Assistant Secretary. So this does not take anything away from the treasurer position, just in case of delegation or for some reason, the treasurer cannot perform duties and someone has to get something done out of town, if you have to sign a document, especially if we're filing a tax levy or filing the budget, this authorizes this staff. And who we're looking to appoint would be our Superintendent Finance, Karen Larson, into this role, and this is a similar practice that many park districts have in place.
I would also say that the park policy that we passed last month had treasurer and four roles of the treasurer plays. And when we were going through our discussion about mending the policy, we realized that the actual board treasurer that's appointed doesn't actually do two of the four things listed. So the choices were to either take those out of the treasurer role, which, when we got to consensus, we didn't want to do, or it was, as the Executive Director said, assign an assistant, which I believe we're doing after this, to Superintendent Larson, who actually fulfills these roles. And my thought is, as a treasurer, I still like that we have a large enough board that we can have a treasurer. We don't need a staff person to actually fill that role. The treasurer still is overall responsible for all four of these points that are in our Board Policy Manual, but our Assistant Treasurer actually is the one who does the actual reporting or the audit compliance, right? This says, one of the notes, and I just took a picture of this, was, works with external auditors. Last time I checked, the treasurer didn't even, when I did treasurer, I didn't even see the auditors the entire time. Karen's team took care of everything, which is, we had them, exactly. She kept them from us. But the board treasurer still was the one that overall was in charge of making sure that the audit was done by Karen and her staff. So this is kind of the workaround, so we didn't have to change too much. And I think, like the Executive Director said, to have someone who can sign on a tax levy on a short notice instead of having to run to people's houses like the staff has done in the past for some secretary stuff, I believe having an assistant, have it be on staff, is a valuable tool for our board, and that's the reason why we're going to have to do a resolution tonight. So are there any comments or questions for myself or the Executive Director about this appointment?
While we're doing it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mary Beth, can you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Malin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mattsa?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hulting?
Yes.
Commissioner Leduke?
Aye.
Commissioner Grau?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and that was the only item for policy, so I will turn it over to Commissioner Hulting for intergovernmental.
Oh, we are discussing an intergovernmental agreement with Main Township High School, the sheltering issue.
Jenny Myers, Risk and Safety Manager, for you those that don't know me. Tonight, I'm bringing forward an inter- Tonight, I'm bringing forward an intergovernmental agreement with Main Township High School District Two Oh Seven that would designate Centennial Fitness Center as an emergency reunification point in the event of a crisis at Main South. And so this agreement defines our role in that, providing the center space and then also access to phone and internet for them to set up a command center. And then District Two Oh Seven would be responsible for anybody that they're bringing in, as well as covering any damages that would be incurred from this particular incident. And then any staffing costs directly related to the incident outside of our normal business hours. So the District Two Oh Seven will carry insurance and name us as additionally insured in accordance with the insurance requirements in the agreement. And the agreement is, the term of the agreement is for three years. And it has been attorney reviewed and prima reviewed as well. I believe this partnership supports our community safety and emergency preparedness. And it's a proactive plan that aligns with our mission here at the district and serves our community in a more meaningful way. So I turn to you to discuss and hopefully approve.
I can't believe you can fit four thousand people in the fitness center. That's crazy.
Okay, so there, so we did seek advice from the fire marshal. And it is, Terry can speak to this, too. It's a formula and it's based on all of our spaces.
I'm just being.
It's very.
We're in different corners, so I could, I thought about it.
If they use the pool.
As long as there's lifeguards.
So on the first page of the agreement, the second paragraph in the bottom, "School and School District" is spelled incorrectly. There's only one O. I just noticed that.
Thank you.
Last night. School District.
How did this come about? Did they approach us?
They did approach us. They approached Justin at the Fitness Center. And then we had met with them and walked through the facility with their emergency response team and worked everything out. And then here we are.
Kind of surprising the world that we live in that it hadn't happened before.
We had always been designated as their space. And I think they were reevaluating their emergency plans. And so they wanted to solidify everything. And they initially sent a letter of agreement, but we turned it into an intergovernmental agreement.
That's great.
Yeah.
This is something Jenny worked hard with, with April and her staff along with Terry as well. So it's been a really group effort. Tonight, this is just for discussion. We're not approving it until next month's meeting. The school districts bring it to their board for discussion and approval again in June, too. So tonight was just discussion. So we'll make sure we'll spell school correctly when we get it approved. So thank you. Appreciate it.
There's a whereas wrong on the bottom of page fifty-three if you're fluent typos.
Any typos, we will, any typos, we will correct.
School District.
And on page fifty-eight, for Principal Babacani's email address, there's a comma that got slid in after the at sign that shouldn't be there.
Lot of eyes were on this. So a lot of red lines. Sometimes you miss a couple of things.
This is what we like to call the product of track changes between the park district and the school district, where everything's in blue and red and you miss an O in school and you miss an E. And whereas, so I imagine this will be ironed out before the final version is up before the board next month.
Any other questions? It's a great partnership, I think. Thank you.
I had a question. Are any other park facilities used for something similar?
Yes. So we actually have established sites with District Sixty-four as well. So like, in the event that Washington would have to evacuate, they would utilize Centennial Activity Center, Lincoln, the Fitness Center. And Main Park has Carpenter, vice versa. And it's a reciprocal thing. We're actually assessing our security and we're having a security assessment done by a professional. So once that's completed and we evaluate our reunification points, I will do that same agreement for District Sixty-four as well. But I've been working with their contact there. And we have exchanged like contact information and identified what sites go where. And I just don't have them in front of me. Sorry.
Thank you. I mean, it makes sense, right? Intergovernmental, helping this stuff out. And I appreciate that we're just putting this all on paper now for stuff that we already do. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is it. So I will turn it over. I guess that's, Cindy, is that you for communications?
Do we have any communications and correspondence?
Can I just share a positive communication that was very, you know, it was the seventy-fifth anniversary of the baseball and softball event that was on a beautiful, gorgeous Saturday afternoon just this past weekend. And the entire park was bustling with activity, food trucks, hundreds of kids, families, just a perfect day. And, you know, I got the opportunity to just take this in as I was waiting for the event to start. And grandfather was there with his grandchild, walked up to me, saw I had my name tag on and said, "You guys do a terrific job." And I was like, "Well, thank you very much." And I felt like, well, I have to relay that to all the people that were involved in that event and say thank you because that's a compliment to all of you. So just wanted to relay that communication.
Anything else? Any other correspondence? All right, any new business? Welcome to the board. I appreciate. You made it. We made it above the ground. I thought we were going below ground. All right, well, then I move to adjourn the meeting of the Board of Park Commissioners. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Where's John?
Nay, no.